I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Garzuk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman DiMaria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez Morales.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
See, that's why I'm gonna make fun of you, I do stuff like that. Thank you. Dr. McGorick, are there any changes or additions for the agenda?
Yes. Under the consent agenda, under student achievement, the governor's school funding agreement, and under personnel, ratification of personnel, under the discussion agenda, personnel with a staffing update, and student achievement, the annual update on student performance.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements and spotlights?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Radford.
Thank you Chairman DiMaria. Good evening to other members of the board tonight, and certainly good evening to everyone that is here on this our first official meeting of the school year where I have the opportunity to share some exciting news about the great work that our students are doing in our schools. Specifically tonight, I'm very privileged to present Mr. Joe Gabowski, principal of Osborne High School. He's going to share some information along with a couple of his students about some humanitarian efforts that their student body is doing as a result of the things that are going on in our nation right now. So, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Mr. Gabowski, and then he and his students will share the information with you.
Good evening, everybody. A couple of weeks ago, I went to our student leadership classes and asked our student leaders to consider doing some things for the folks in Texas, and that has sort of morphed itself into doing a project that will affect both Texas and Florida. And I didn't give them a whole lot of parameters, so what they're about to share with you is student-driven, and I think you'll agree with me that we have two passionate leaders, but I will say there are a number of students at the high school, many, many students, that are taking this very seriously, and they have an initiative that they want to share with you. So, without further ado, Emma Boas and Letitia Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the school board. My name is Emma Boas.
My name's Letitia Martinez.
And we are part of the SCA program at Osborne High School. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about a silent auction, which we anticipate will take place on September 18th during back-to-school night. This auction is to benefit those who are affected in Texas as well as Irma. Two weeks almost to the day, Mr. Gabowski walked into my leadership class, and he asked the students, "What can we do to help those who have been affected by Hurricane Harvey, and then in the path of Hurricane Irma?" So, after conversing with each other, we decided that we would come up with two activities.
Both of the ideas revolved around our theme, be the change. Our first idea was creating class buckets and passing them around lunch and collecting loose change. The buckets are also housed in the main office. The Osborne classes are super competitive, so what a better way to raise money than a friendly competition between the classes to see who can receive the most loose change. The classes with the most loose change will receive Spirit Week points, which will go in homecoming week, which the students get really excited about.
Homecoming week is very competitive at Osborne High School. Alright.
So, who, the students at Osborne High School, our community, and our parents? What, the silent auction? Where, Osborne High School? When, Monday, September 18th during our back-to-school night?
So, here's the why. Last year, we showed you who we were. We had the theme, "We Are." And the whole entire school, Osborne High School, came together to create a beautiful mural picking out Osborne High School's best traits. So, now, we are ready to be the change. We're ready to take those traits, and we're ready to put them into action.
So, where's the money going? The money is going straight to the Red Cross. The Red Cross is an organization that is about hurricane relief and human assistance. Like our other fundraiser with the buckets, they will also go to the Red Cross. The Red Cross will also disperse the money into those impacted by Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma.
Now, we showed you who we were. We are ready to make the change.
Are there any questions?
Just, oh, sorry. Oops. Turn this on, sorry. Girls, I think this is fantastic.
Thank you.
Auction items. You need help getting auction items.
At the moment, we are just looking, yes, we would love if you are interested in donating. That would be absolutely wonderful.
Just say yes. Excellent. Because you're on TV, and anybody who's watching or sees it online, we need auction items for the 19th, right?
Eighteenth.
September 18th.
Yep.
Thank you.
There's thousands of people watching right now. Mr. Williams?
I just wanna say thank you all for doing this, I'm proud of you for doing it, and it's a great, great idea. So, go forward and ask the community for the aid and the best we can do.
And I do really quickly wanna say, I did send an email regarding sort of the blueprint of the silent auction to you guys as a school board, and I wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart. Within 10 minutes, I got responses from most of you guys, and I really wanna thank you for your support, because that means the world to me. I know that means the world to Letitia, and that means the world to Osborne High School. So, thank you for your support. I do.
Let me let you in something. You all mean the world to us. This is the kind of people we want to be coming out of Osborne High School, and you make us very proud. So, get your bucket and bring your bucket on up. Don't come to me first. Jimmy, you got some money, Jimmy?
I do.
I'm opting all.
Is there a due date for the auction items?
Anytime, literally up until Sunday. I'm very flexible.
So, the due date would be Sunday?
Yes.
Before Sunday?
We have one more vote before we leave today. Should that go with the teacher bucket or the class of 2018?
Class of 2018 is a little competitive.
Well, we love our teachers, but you are a step down from our kids. So, that goes 2018.
It is all about the kids.
I don't think we need to take a vote on that, do we? No. No. I'm pretty certain that one goes to 2018. Thank you, girls, very much. We really much appreciate it. Is that all the spotlights, Ms. Radford? Thank you. Committee reports. Mr. Williams, anything on academics?
No report.
Everybody's happy. Mr. Albrecht, anything on education support? You don't wanna stay for this? This gets so exciting.
No report.
No report. I'm gonna continue. Ms. Kiefer, policy?
Yes, we'll be having an upcoming policy meeting on September 21st.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Albrecht.
The finance meeting is Thursday.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Seberg, anything on personnel?
No report, but I did wanna mention that now we have, if you've ever wondered about what each committee does, we now have descriptions on the MCPSVA website under school board.
Okay. Because everybody was wondering. We'll move to board member comments. Mr. Anderson, we're gonna start with you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to be here. I'm so excited to finally be a school board member. I thank you all for welcoming me, and I hope to do well.
Thank you. Mr. Morales.
Hello, my name is Evan Morales, and I'm the new student representative for the school board, and I'm swell, very excited to be here. I'm looking forward to representing the school board for the future, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Seberg.
I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Chair, all the citizens here and everybody watching at home for being involved and staying involved. Happy back-to-school to everyone. A great way to stay connected is to look at your app, make sure you have it downloaded on your phone, stay connected, and make sure your settings are on all the schools that you follow. You can check grades, attendance, missing assignments, and things like that that are very helpful for parents. Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Say, welcome back to everyone. It's great to see everyone here, and it's so weird having this backdrop. It's kinda hard to get used to. But, other than that, I have no comments, but welcome back, and I will see you all, hopefully, every two weeks.
Thank you, sir. Grandpa O'Hanlon.
Keep stealing my thunder here. The leaders left, but I was gonna thank the Osborne leaders for being the change that they are. Welcome new student school board members, and welcome back all students and teachers. A special thank you to all the year-round employees who have been busy all summer getting everything ready for the 17, 18th school year. This past weekend, we had the Out of Darkness Walk, which I'm sorry I missed, I had other things going on Sunday, which I will get to, but just a word on that, please, if you know someone who may be suffering alone, reach out to them. If you have a friend or a family member who doesn't show up for an event you were expecting them at, please reach out to them, check on them, show that you care about them. And then this Sunday, I was down in Richmond where my wife Anne and I became grandparents. Our daughter Katie Burcik, OHS, class of 2005, gave birth to a beautiful baby girl, Ryan Anne. Mother, baby, and father are all doing well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Grandpa. Mrs. Williams.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to welcome everybody back to school, and I hope they take advantage of the opportunities that are set forth in front of them. I think Manassas City Public Schools have grown tremendously in the past several years, and I hope the kids realize it as well, and I hope they take advantage of a lot of the opportunities out there. Also, I just wanna take a moment to say how proud, excited I am about how everybody throughout this country has come together for both Texas and Florida, and a lot of people are even going to the islands for all the devastation. There are islands that are just totally wiped out, and it's really, really neat to see this whole entire country get together and help everybody, and that's the kind of thing I love to see. Anyway, welcome back to the school year, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. First, I wanted to welcome our newest members. Never be shy. We learn from you as much as we hope you learn something from us. So, welcome. Peter, congratulations to you, Anne, and your family. And welcome back. You know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't think we ever sit up here and claim that school years start off totally smoothly and without kinks, but I will say that from everybody, from instructional assistants to teachers, to staff, to central office, to our bus drivers, our maintenance, and everybody else, we've had a good start to this year. We're very optimistic. We're very grateful to everybody for making it all happen, and we'll continue to keep working on that and continuing to make this division as great as it really is. I do wanna say too that, you know, over the last few months, we've, you know, been challenged by political storms, by real storms, and to have our kids come up here tonight and remind us of what's important and to keep us centered makes me realize why I do this. So, I just want all of us, as we go along throughout the school year, to remember why we're here, and it's for those kids and all of the kids out there that remind us why we should be doing what we do. Thank you, and have a great school year, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Probably like every single one of the Osborne students, or every one of our students. Where'd the summer go, right? It's yet another great school year. It's why we're here. To our students, good luck this year. To our faculty and staff, thank you. I think we're all looking forward to it. Last week, I was in Charlottesville at one of the state board meetings, and it just reminds me, as I hear about what's happening across the Commonwealth, how well we do things here in the city of Manassas. Sometimes it's really easy to pick on ourselves and say we could be better, because we do hold ourselves to a high standard. We wanna be great. But, when we compare ourselves across the nation, we are doing well. We should always sit back and reflect upon that, not rest on those laurels. We should strive for greatness, but we shouldn't pick on those scabs too often.
Thank you, sir. I won't reiterate what everybody else said, except for welcome, fellas. Be prepared. I will give you a few weeks before I really start lashing into you and making fun of you, but for right now, welcome. Pete, congratulations, brother. I'm very happy for you. Yesterday was 9/11, and it's a day we need to remember, and we always will. It's ingrained in us. What I'd like to remember, and I'd like everybody to remember, is 9/12 and the days afterwards. I remember walking into 7-Eleven on 9/12, or it might have been 9/13. It's been 16 years. I'm old, I don't remember. Everybody was so kind. Everybody was interested in everybody else. We were all on the same page. So, I'd like for Manassas City Public Schools to be on the same page like we were 16 years ago today. It's so much nicer, so much easier in life to be nice to one another than to be at each other's throats. And the days after 9/11, we were that way. Everybody was kind. Everybody was in love with everybody again. So, try and remember that for 9/11 and the days afterwards. And congratulations to our ladies here tonight, Emma and Letice. Is that how you say her name? That's what we're going with. Letisa.
Leticia.
Okay. Leticia. Just so impressive, so incredibly impressive. And we've been graduating impressive people from Osborne for a long time. And now, we'll go on to citizens' comments, and speaking of, see that segue there, Jimmy?
I did.
I'm not gonna read my whole spiel here. You got three minutes, and be polite, and be done at three minutes, okay?
You got a timer?
Yes, we do, actually, Jimmy. And you'll have one there in front of you. This is Jimmy Weaver, spelled J-I-M-I. We're not sure why. Class of 1978.
Good afternoon, Chairman DiMaria, board members, Superintendent McGorick. Yes, my name is Jimmy Weaver. I'm a lifelong resident of both the town and the city of Manassas, and I am an original Eagle. I am a graduate of Osborne High School, class of 1978. I'm here to talk about the recommendation to rename the gym floor after Barry Suddes and rename Tudor Lane Eagle Way. I sent the recommendation in to Tim. It was not my, the recommendation to rename the floor was not my original idea. It had been recommended to the principal last year, and we never heard anything back from the principal. We think it makes more sense to name the gym floor after Barry. We cannot rename the gym, because the gym is already named after Lou Maroon. It makes sense to name the gym floor after Barry. Barry was the original basketball coach at Osborne High School. He also coached many other things. He was a teacher there for, heck, he was my teacher in 1978, okay? Barry passed away a couple of years ago, and we just, we thought it made more sense to name the gym floor after Barry and maybe put a plaque up in the gym. I've heard some other ideas. I'm just, I would like you guys to vote in the affirmative on the recommendation to rename the gym floor. I also would like to rename, I have heard the city wants us to rename Tudor Lane. I would like it to be, my recommendation to the board was to rename it Eagle Way with an address of Osborne High School of 1978, which was, I mean, 1977, which was when the school system came into being, and Baldwin of 1978, which was the first graduating class of the Osborne City Schools. So, I just would like to, I'd like to request that you guys vote in the affirmative on both those. I don't know what we can do with the city about renaming the street name, but it makes sense to name it Eagle Way. While I still have a minute, the Osborne Alumni Association is having a raffle. The raffle will have, will sell 300 tickets. Each one of the tickets will cost $100 apiece. The grand prize is $10,000. You have a 1 in 15 chance of winning back at least your $100 donation for your ticket. I've also been told that the Alumni Association has decided to donate one of the raffle tickets to the silent auction, for their silent auction on back-to-school night. Do any of y'all have any questions about the recommendation on the renaming of the floor or the street name?
We don't go back and forth with you, Jimmy.
Oh, sorry. I'm new to this, Tim.
Yeah, I know y'all, baby.
By the way, Tim and I have known each other a long time. We played football together at Osborne High School back way, much longer than we want to admit to. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jimmy. Do you have any what, sir?
Can we guess which one of you guys was in the skilled position?
I was skilled at sitting on the bench. I've had the same view for 40 years. I haven't changed yet. I'm kidding, but seriously. They didn't let me play. Everybody said, "So, did you play when you were in high school?" No, I was on the team, but I didn't play. Okay. We are very light here. Anybody else like to speak? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, Jimmy. We appreciate it. Go back up to the consent agenda. Mr. O'Hanlon, would you have a motion for me?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Hanlon, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas accept the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion?
Discussion. I'd like to disclose my spouse is on that, and that in no way hampers my ability to waive the decision on the overall consent agenda.
Thank you. Did you know she was on it before I told you?
No, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Okay. We'll move on to discussion agenda. The Governor's STEM Academy at Osborne High School. Mr. Gabowski, is that who I'm calling? I guess you gotta come first, sir. Sorry, Paul.
It's okay. Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, Vice Chairman Albrecht, Dr. McGorick, and members of the board. My name is Paul Steiner. I'm the Career and Technical Education Administrator at Osborne High School. I'm honored to be here this evening to share information about the Governor's STEM Academy at Osborne High School. And also, I have Mr. Joe Gabowski, principal of Osborne High School, with me, and also, I have Susan McNamara. She is the Career and Technical Education Supervisor for Manassas City Public Schools. So, what is the Governor's STEM Academy? It is a special program designation by qualified high school career and technical education programs. It is a very, very prestigious honor that we have for Osborne High School and for the city of Manassas. There are only, and we'll see this in coming slides, there are only 23 Governor's STEM Academies in the state of Virginia, so Osborne High School is now an elite group of high schools. Students can earn an advanced science and technical study seal on their diploma, and Osborne High School is now an elite group of schools that have access to special funding and grant opportunities. And also, the Governor's STEM Academy is the culmination of our K-12 STEM plan for Okay? Facts on the program. There are only 23 Governor's STEM Academies in the state of Virginia. It was started in 2007 by Governor Tim Kaine, and Governor's STEM Academies are intended to be the equivalent of Governor's School, so they are the CTE equivalent of the Governor's School program. How do we earn this distinction? It was a three-year process, and the application correlates programs offered with regional employment needs. The application documents support that we have from community and local business partners. It was presented to the Virginia School Board on June 22nd, 2017, and the application was voted on and approved on July 28th, 2017. One of the most, probably the most exciting experience I've ever had in my educational career thus far. Why is the academy designation important for our students? Data from the Department of Labor's Bureau of Labor Statistics indicates that there are nearly 6.8 million STEM jobs in the United States, and that represents 6.2% of the employment in the United States. So, these jobs are extremely relevant to this area also, with the industries that we have that employ a wide variety of students. This slide represents our K-12 STEM continuum, and our K-12 STEM plan culminates at Osborne High School, and this slide represents the continuum across all grades. Based on local and regional needs, data, and regional needs and data, the advisory committee selected these pathways to provide instruction and opportunities for students to graduate with high-demand credentials. As pathways grow at Osborne High School, the academy will offer enhancement courses to deepen student studies in these pathways. The Governor's STEM Academy provides the opportunity for students to earn up to 24 college credits in a combination of academic and technical courses. And what we see on this slide is just the dual enrollment courses that are contained within the Governor's STEM Academy. Recruitment and admissions. We are currently recruiting 9th and 10th graders within the Project Lead the Way classes at Osborne High School. This spring, or spring of '18, we plan on rolling out recruitment to 8th graders at Metz Middle School. This slide shows the initial projected enrollment. We anticipate these numbers will grow as interest in the Governor's STEM Academy grows. Students participate in a variety of authentic experiences, including hands-on and project-based learning opportunities. The Governor's STEM Academy students will extend their knowledge through work-based learning experiences within area business and industry partners. We continuously pursue work-based learning opportunities that will provide meaningful experiences for academy students. Students will actively participate in pathway-related co-curricular student organizations, and we are fortunate to have a wide range of community, business, and education partners. We are continuing efforts to pursue more partners moving forward. Thank you very much for allowing me to share this information on the opportunity that we have for Manassas City Public School students. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Real quick, we had a special meeting yesterday at 1:30 that I was not able to attend. That gave me the opportunity to come to the school, the city council meeting last night and sat in our nice white-colored chairs here and watch Paul present this last night to city council.
Thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
No problem. The council was very receptive to this. Ms. Bass, Ms., obviously, Mrs. Sobeski, and Mr. Avini had very good things to say, you know, about what we're doing here, and it was very impressive last night, and it's very impressive again today, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Anyway, Ms. Kiefer?
And I just wanted to echo that there is so much work that went in to this application process that no one knows about, so I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that this wasn't an easy thing at all, and it just speaks volumes to the work that everybody who is involved with this does here. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kiefer's right. It is congratulations, but I'm gonna start where I started with my intro comments, with what we have here in the city of Manassas. Mr. Steiner started with 23 Governor CTE schools, science, technology, and math academy Mr. Steiner started with 23 Governor CTE schools, science, technology, and math academies we have, one of 23 in the state. We also have a partnership with George Mason, between County and Manassas Park, and have a regional Governor's School focusing on STEM right out our back door. A partial program, but a fantastic program, offering our children incredible abilities. Plus, we have pretty robust AP curriculum. I would venture to say we probably offer more things to our students than any other school system in the Commonwealth. I'd be curious to know how many have a regional Governor's School and an academy? You know, the max could be 23, in all likelihood, and I bet it's a lot less than that. So, I mean, we are truly in the elite of what we're doing for our children. And it's unfortunate we don't have a community paper, so it's incumbent upon us to make sure that word gets out there, and that people know what we really have to offer. Having been one of the founders of the Governor's School at Innovation Park, my one thing I'd like to make sure, and you nailed it when you talked about recruitment, and if you talk to the current director out there, what he's doing, is we need to make sure we're not cannibalizing our recruitment and student selection of one versus the other. We're actually looking to complement the programs. It's a, it's a long-term success-oriented structure, but Mrs. Keefer and I were at a board meeting last, last week, and we are finally at the point where the regional Governor's School is actually hitting its max attendance, and we're now talking about expansion with George Mason and what else could possibly be done on a regional matter.
Thank you. In case you didn't realize it, Mr. Albrecht is excited about this. Just wanna make sure everybody's clear, we're all on the same page. Yes, I, uh, any others? You got that?
Well, I'm not like the governor. If Governor McCallum was here, he'd have started with how many cyber jobs are sitting open in the Commonwealth, and how this is gonna help solve that void. I could tell you, not a speech goes by, I heard him, he has to say it.
He's excited about this.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner.
Thank you very much.
We've been doing all your work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
2017-21 Strategic Plan. Mr. Lyons, I assume? This is exciting. We've never seen this before. That's sarcasm. Are, are, yeah. We only got 10 more minutes. All right, go, go. That's fine, Ron.
Yeah, he chased him away.
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, Vice Chairman Albrecht, Dr. McGorke, members of the board. This evening, we're excited to propose to you the strategic plan for 2017, 2021. This has been a work in progress since early spring, and tonight, we'll be presenting it to you. Just before we get started, to give you a little background, we did have procure some consulting services from K-12 Insight, and they'll be here this evening to review some data that was gathered at the beginning of the process, and also brief you on their work with the committees that led to the proposed plan this evening. The presentation will be moderated through the slideshow, but I would invite you to also open a document that's attached to the agenda, and as, as the goals are presented, they'll be referencing page numbers in this document. But no further ado, I introduce to you Dr. Knoblock and Dr. Martinez from K-12 Insight.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Chairman DiMaria, Vice Chairman Albrecht, Dr. McGorke, members of the board. It is my distinct pleasure to be here to share with you the culmination of months of work, listening to your community, listening to your stakeholders, the students, the teachers, the employees, on what does the future look like for Manassas City Public Schools? And I think this evening began with your students, and we just saw the program for the, the new Governor's STEM Academy, and I think your excitement is going to be contagious because there are great things happening here, and the future looks very bright. On behalf of myself, Steve Knoblock, and I'm the Chief Leading Officer at K-12 Insight, and Dr. Martinez, who's been here before, sharing other work that we've done for you and with you. We, it's, the excitement of sharing that work is one of the highlights of our work and making it come to life, and so what we're gonna do tonight is share with you a little bit, let's see if I can handle this. Down. Sit this way? That way. Just a little overview of the process we've, we've gone through. We're gonna review some of the, the feedback that we heard early on in the process. We're then going to walk through the highlights of the, the new strategic plan, and then we'll have some next steps. So, again, Dr. Martinez and I facilitated a lot of the work relative to the committee meetings, as well as the survey work, and as the writing and design of the instrument, the plan as you'll see it. About our services, we began, our foundation of our company's work is to be listening. We try to listen very well to what people have to say, the public, in public education. We learn from that, and then we try to help school districts lead. So it's that listen, learn, lead, and so we're right now in that ready-to-lead phase. This is what we've learned so far, we've listened, and so we're going to share with you the draft, and it still has a big red stamp on it saying, "It is draft," that we're going to put out to the public now to get more feedback relative to what was produced by the committees around the strategic plan. I wanted to call out one piece of this regarding developing the metrics and the monitoring process. When we met this in July, when we had the retreat, we talked about that metrics and monitoring process, that the scorecard and all of that will be coming once the plan is finalized, because we didn't want to go back and reproduce that twice. So, for those people who may want to be, want to look for that, and what that looks like, they can comment on that, but the scorecard, that piece of it, has not been developed at this point. So at that, this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Martinez to walk us through the survey results from the Strategic Planning Priority Survey.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Wonderful to see you. Thank you for having us. This will be a high-level overview of the Strategic Plan and Priorities Survey that was conducted between February 21st and March 7th of last school year. The details of the study are outlined here. As Dr. Knoblock said, this was really an outreach for all members of the community, parents, business owners, staff members, and students for feedback on the district's direction. We really gathered perception data about several topics which are outlined there, the top issues and challenges faced by prior, students, financial priorities, and other things. We emailed the invitation out to parents for whom we had email addresses for, along with community members, business owners, staff, and students. And I really want to commend this district for many reasons, but really increasing the outreach via several pre-survey communications methods. There were letters, website news items, and others which really reflect best practice. This report summarizes the survey results and does compare them by stakeholder groups where appropriate. So there are some stack bar graphs that will show by students, and parents, and community members, whereas others will really be presented at the aggregate. In terms of participation, you'll see here that while 8,500 invitations went out, we heard from just over 1,000 people. The role that best describes them are listed there. We heard mostly from 56% identifying as parents and guardians who currently attend MCPS. In terms of participation, you'll see that most of the parents indicated 59% that they had students in grades pre-K through grade four, and then in terms of their race and ethnicity, it's broken down there. I know this question has come up previously. Does this mirror the demographics of, of Manassas City? And it certainly does. We did a little background research there, so in terms of the race/ethnicity breakdown, it, it does mirror what you're seeing in the city. And then we see the breakdown there for staff and parents. When asked about the overall quality of education, you'll see here that overall, more than 3 and 4, 77%, indicate that the overall quality of education here in MCPS is rated as excellent or good. A slight uptick in terms of parents, there was 88% of parents indicating that they perceive the quality of education here as excellent or good. This next slide shows the findings if participants felt like the mission, excuse me, and vision overall represent the right direction. And you'll see here that question to that is overwhelmingly yes. When asked about the areas of pride, you'll see here that participants are really proud of the staff here, and they should be. 55% indicated that that was one of the things that they're most prideful when they think about MCPS, as well as students' achievement, the academic program, and the music and/or arts program. When asked about the challenges, you'll see here that the top three were really found across the board. So we showed the overall rank. You can see it color-coded there. The first column shows what the response choice could be, followed by overall, parents, employees, and students, and those who fell in that other category. So those could be community members or business partners. So you'll see here that recruiting, training, and retaining high-quality staff, increasing student achievement, and addressing school funding issues really were the top three challenges as ranked by the overall population. And then similarly, parents, employees, and students certainly felt that was critical as well. It should be noted here that when students were asked to rank providing a safe and orderly environment, you'll see that that was rank eight. So it was a bit of an outlier, really suggesting that students certainly feel that there are some other challenges to be addressed which really mirror the overall findings. When asked about how they'd like to prefer, access, excuse me, or receive information, you're seeing here what's really on trend. We just did a report debrief with a larger school division in Virginia, very similar findings. So email, accessing the website, and text message continue to be how people would like to receive and access information. We did want to show the information quality, so this is outbound communication, so how your, as an aggregate, as well as parents, students, and others, rating the overall quality of information. You'll see here that almost 3 and 4, the aggregate overall, 73% have rated it excellent or good, and 79% when, when you group those two response choices for parents. Communication skills was number one across the board when looking by stakeholder group, about the most important skill and ability that students will need to be successful in the future. So certainly, thinking through the strategic plan and all of the activities that are tied to it, keeping communication skills at the forefront should certainly be something that's top of mind for everyone, followed by critical thinking skills and those interpersonal skills. Any questions so far?
Anyone want one now?
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna say something real quick on that slide. I'm intrigued that the students have personal financial management skills as number two, and the others are seven to nine.
Mm-hmm.
It's not very important for anybody else, except for the kids who are concerned about their, that's just interesting.
It's a great point. Great point. So in terms of issues facing students, here you see the top three issues. Lack of parental involvement, negative peer pressure, and that rapidly changing world, and how they can adapt to it and be really ready for post-secondary success were ranked as the top three choices. These next few slides show access to these digital devices from the perspective of parents and students. You'll see they're pretty similar. You know, an overwhelming majority do have access, frequent access to internet access, as well as on several types of devices at home. These next few slides really get into bus service, building quality, perceptions of your school lunch and breakfast. You'll see here that at the aggregate, 83% are indicating that the bus service provided by the division is excellent or good. The overall findings mirrored those of parents. When looking at the food nutrition program, this really mirrors what we see elsewhere. Students are very critical of the food that they eat. This is something that we see in all of the survey studies that we do, so while 53% may look fairly low, 58% of parents also indicating excellent or good. When you rate the overall food nutrition program, this is something that we see across the country, and similar findings when asked about school lunch. In these cases, we did exclude responses for not applicable, so this really reflects those participants' perceptions that did provide an answer of one of these qualities, answer options. Then when you look at building quality, 81% of parents indicated that they feel the building quality is either excellent or good, and they had this very similar findings when asked about the building maintenance. 85% of parents indicating that it's excellent or good compared to 81% at the overall level. So before we jump into any of the key insights, were there any other questions from anyone from the board, or Dr. McGorke?
Just on building maintenance, because it's intriguing, because there are sometimes perceptions, and one could say since no one rated us poor, we may be hit with potential of Taj Mahal's, but I find it intriguing that the students and our faculty and staff, we're the most critical of our facilities, and is that something you normally see, because they're the ones who are in the buildings the most? When you walk by from the street, it looks lovely, you really don't know what's under the covers? I mean, I'm kind of curious of which, if there's any analysis of that data.
Oh, sure. I think, you know, Dr. Knoblock and I would both agree that those who are really in those settings are the ones that are experiencing it day-to-day and really provide the most accurate perception data, so certainly, I think that that's a great point. I don't have any national reference data to compare it to, but I think you're, you're spot-on, you know, when you're asking people about the interactions that they're having with employees within their, their setting, parents with the teachers that they're interacting with most. It's very easy to provide some perception data based on those experiences, absolutely. All right, so just moving to the key insights, these were some of the major findings that we had when we were looking at these data. You know, parents and community members are very pleased, at least those who took the survey. We had, we heard from about 1,000 voices. 80% of parents rated the overall quality of the school system as excellent or good. Strong majority, 91%, indicating that the vision and mission statement really reflected the right direction for the division. Survey participants are most proud of the staff that's leading the schools. And the top three challenges really were consistent across stakeholder groups, and they're outlined there. Recruiting, training, and retaining your staff, increasing student achievement, and addressing school funding issues. Kudos to all of the outbound communication that's happening within the district. It's being very well-received in terms of its quality by participants who took the survey. And we certainly stress, you know, really focusing on those communication skills because those were things that were of top priority. I also failed to mention during one of the challenges piece that this really connects to what I, I'm sure you're hearing within the business community. It's something that, you know, when districts are completing these surveys, they do reach out, whether it's having the business community provide input on the survey instrument itself, or really looking, helping analyze the data. So that was one thing I failed to mention during that slide that I just wanted to touch upon. Happy to take any additional questions. All right.
Thank you very much.
So now, I want to jump in and begin the overview of the draft-proposed strategic plan for 2017 through 2021 for Manassas City Public Schools, starting off with the title of it being "Learning for the Future." To this point, as Dr. Martinez said, we started off this effort by listening to your community through a Strategic Planning Priority Survey. We then established four different committees, and we met over the course of three months, March, April, and May, multiple times to review the survey results, data, and programs and initiatives tied specifically to content areas. And then we began developing goal statements, objectives, ideas for what metrics might be there as a committee. And then we took all of that together, and we began aligning them. Suggestions from the Communication and Community Engagement Committee oftentimes would infiltrate, if you will, another committee's work, or things from Operations and Facilities would be talked about, and HR would be affected. So we wanted to make sure there was some alignment. We didn't want one committee not to have ideas for other committees and to share those. So we took that together, and then we laid out the draft plans. And working with staff and the heads of the different departments, we then synthesized the data and drafted up the language. So, the foundation of any strategic plan is built on the vision, mission, and value. So, the reference point on here in page six is in the draft plan, but basically, we presented the previous vision statement during the survey and tweaked it slightly to state that each student becomes a positive contributing member of society by maximizing his or her potential. That's the vision that you have for all of your employees, for all of your staff members, for your community members, that at the end of their term in their schooling here at Manassas City Public Schools, that they become contributing members of society that maximize their potential. That being said, the mission statement was tweaked a little bit to be more explicit, where we broke out the collaboration. So, Manassas City Public Schools, in collaboration with families, employees, and community members, will provide a safe and innovative learning environment that inspires, engages, and challenges all students. all students. Those two statements together lay the foundation, and as we look at the plan tonight and as the community gives feedback, is we're going to look at the alignment between what we've created, those goals, those objectives and those metrics, and how tightly they align with that vision and mission statement that have been laid forward. The belief statements were tweaked just a little bit during the retreat in July. You have five belief statements. We believe students must have access to high-quality instruction to develop the skills to support their success and on-time graduation. We believe student learning must include opportunities for critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity and citizenship. Manassas City Public Schools believes in open proactive communication as one community in support of student success. We believe financial decisions should be based on an inclusive and open process that supports student learning. And then finally, you believe in an innovative, safe and orderly environment that maximizes student performance. Those core beliefs are what lay a foundation, and it predicated on all of the actions that move forward for the district as you look at the strategic plan. The four large goal areas are optimizing academic performance and student success. Note, we did wrestle with the verbs here. We want to optimize academic performance and student success. Cultivate a culture of excellence and service throughout the school division. Forge relationships to support and maximize success. And then operate effectively and efficiently. Those four overarching goals are what are going to be looked toward to measure success over the course of the next four years, 2017 to 2021. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stone and Dr. Saunders, and we're going to go to goal area number one. Optimizing academic performance and student success on page 10 of your plan.
Good evening. For goal number one, again referenced on page 10, our goal is optimize academic performance and student success. Our committee met several times, as Steve alluded to. We had lots of good conversation, and really, we tried to force ourselves to really look at what does innovation look like for students to be successful academically, socially, emotionally, and that really encompasses this whole goal. There are four objectives within this goal. The first one is increase student achievement for all students. You'll see some of the actions and tasks listed on page 10, a couple that I will point out to you. A task or an action of developing a pre-K center for the school division is one of those tasks underneath that. And creating support structures to reduce chronic absenteeism and tardies. That was something that we had a lot of conversation about as well. Our second objective is to ensure a safe and respectful learning environment, and this is where we talk about our positive student behavior reports within this particular action or task. The third objective is to expand and support student-centered learning environments, and some of the tasks underneath of this would be providing access to learning regardless of time, space, those kinds of things where we think outside the box, where it looks different. When we talk about our Governor STEM Academy, how does that look when students go out and have real-world experiences? It may not fit the timeframes that we know today. Under this one, we also have a lot of the conversation that you heard about communication, collaboration, those skills that students want, that they have reflected on that they want and that our community or their businesses know that they need. So we've merged those together to really have a focus on that communication, collaboration, creativity. And the final objective is to graduate college and/or career-ready students. And this is really taking that, expanding that K-12 CTE plan that's in place and moving it to the next direction, and continuing with our K-12 STEM plan as well. And creating structured programs really for those students to have internships, externships for teachers, job shadowing experiences, and really having those experiences to make them capable of moving outside of the school world and into jobs or careers or wherever they choose to be when they graduate. That concludes ours. Ms. Wingfield?
Were there any questions on that? That's okay. They'll yell if they do. I want to reiterate that you can, that we have seen this multiple times, and we've questioned it multiple times, and we've tweaked it multiple times. So the reason we don't have questions is that they've been asked over and over and over for months and months and months. Ma'am?
The Human Resources Committee met several times in April. As a committee, we discuss concerns and work to develop goals. Focus of our meeting quickly came to discussion on teacher recruitment, teacher retention, filling teacher vacancies, relevant professional development for all employees, not just teachers, feedback from supervisors, and the desire for a collaborative environment within schools, within departments and across lines throughout the division. These ideas generated the goal of cultivating a culture of excellence and service, which was then divided into two objectives. The first objective is to attract, develop and retain highly qualified and effective instructional and support staff. The second objective is to strengthen and open collaborative working environment throughout Manassas City Public Schools. To do this, we'll work on the development of incentive program to attract and retain the best employees, expand professional development, review the benefit program and continue to refine and expand our recognition program for employees. To strengthen a collaborative working environment, we'll create and maintain system and structures that assure a collaborative working environment in every school and department, and building a culture responsive internal and external customer service throughout the division.
Good evening again, and I'm here to represent the community, or communication and community engagement portion of the strategic plan. Just like the others before me, we also conducted, I think, three meetings to prepare information for the plan. One of our committee members, Jennifer Boaz, is here tonight. She was here supporting her daughter as well. But certainly, we had a lot of discussion around communication. We understand that it bleeds into so many areas in the school division, and that it's so important for us to operate at an optimal level as we communicate with our stakeholders. So some of the things that we talked about were our existing modes of communication. We put emphasis on our Let's Talk platform because that is something that has certainly grown since we implemented that a couple of years ago, as far as feedback is concerned from some of our parents, our employees, our students now as well, and people in the community. We also talked about our use of our mobile app, which Ms. Seberg brought up tonight as well. And I don't have the exact number of downloads that we have at this very moment, but it has picked up, and it's certainly something that we will continue to push out to our stakeholders. And something else that has been really great for us as far as engagement with our community and our parents has been our MCPS Parent and Community Leadership Academy. It's certainly been an opportunity for people to grow personally, to develop their leadership skills, and we've seen so many move on to other activities in their lives inside the schools and also within the city of Manassas. So some of the things that we talked about that we wanted to highlight, especially with regards to what our goal was, forging relationships to support and maximize success. And at the core of everything that we talked about, we figured that relationship was there, that in order to be able to communicate better between teachers and students and, you know, staff to home, and even central office, the community, everybody, as we talked about it, the more we discussed it, we figured out that relationships matter. And so that was why we laid our hat there, and the objectives that we came up with were to communicate opportunities for families to acquire necessary information, knowledge and skills to support their child's learning at home and school, to expand community and business partnerships to broaden support for student learning, and then to strengthen internal communication within and across schools and departments. So how are we going to do those things? Well, some of the things that we like to do is to increase, under objective one, we want to increase access to information and resources using a variety of methods to support parents and their child's learning. And increase parent and family awareness of school events. We understand that that's something that's a hot topic for many of our parents, awareness, making sure that that information is on websites and in the app, and that teachers and staff members are verbally communicating these things. Enhance and refine communication between school and home. As far as expansion of community and business partnerships to broaden our support for student learning, certainly we'll continue to work with people like Ms. McNamara, Mr. Steiner, who were here tonight, in our workforce development. But we want to promote and expand opportunities for greater involvement in division and school activities and initiatives for our businesses in the community, to expand community partnerships and their involvement, to expand leadership opportunities for the businesses and community members and also our parents. And finally, under our objective three, to strengthen internal communication because we understand that also, I heard someone ask me a question the other day about us being public communications, and I said, you know, our internal staff is our public as well. Our students are our public as well. And so some of the ways that we want to enhance that and strengthen it is to use multiple communication channels because we, as Dr. Martinez brought out in the presentation, we found that our parents and our community, they use multiple ways to get the information that they need. And so we want to continue surveying and understanding exactly the ways they want to receive that. We want to expand the MyMCPS employee portal. That's our internal Intranet, and that's something that we're building out, and our many departments are utilizing that right now. And it's an avenue that we want to send staff members to, to receive information beyond just email and verbal confirmations. Create and implement an interactive division-wide communication portal somewhere else that people can go in and receive news if they need it. And to support and expand opportunities for employees to participate, excuse me, in the decision-making process. That was something that came out of the strategic plan survey as well, that our employees want to be engaged in those conversations as decisions are being made. So those are the highlights of our communications and community engagement. Are there any questions? All right, I'll turn it over to Andy Hawkins for Finance and Operations.
Good evening. I sectioned on page 16. I do want to stress the second paragraph in our goal, where it states that the Finance and Operations Departments will provide high-quality service to students and staff that enhances the learning environment in a cost-effective manner. Quality and efficiency in these departments are paramount to ensuring that all available funding is allocated to improve classroom instruction. So how do we hope to accomplish that? Well, we've established approximately thirty different metrics that we're going to be measuring ourselves against, where we collect our data, we're comparing ourselves to our Region Four peers, which is all of our Northern Virginia school divisions, and then we're also comparing ourselves with national standards established through the Council of Great City Schools. These performance indicators are things such as custodial work cost per square foot, number of days for completion of work orders, our electrical, our water, our natural gas consumption, the cost per invoice, the cost for payroll check. You know, as far as food service, the cost per meal, how many meals can we prepare per hour? What's our participation rate in both breakfast and lunch? You know, transportation, the cost per mile, cost per bus. You know, all of those types of things will help us measure our effectiveness and our efficiency against, to help streamline our processes to help us provide more funding, hopefully, to the instructional program. Our second objective is to develop specific energy conservation projects. So this is, give you a little preview of what the Finance Committee is going to be talking about on Thursday night. We're already, we've been working and going through an RFP process to select a vendor that we hope will impress the Finance Committee and that will be recommended for approval by the School Board at the next School Board meeting, about having energy conservation projects, that we're having our building infrastructure upgraded, and those upgrades being paid for through energy savings over the next ten or fifteen years. I believe that this will be a transformative impact on MCPS. A year from now, all of our lighting throughout the whole, throughout every school will be changed. All of our water fixtures, from toilets to sinks to water fountains, will all be changed. All of our HVAC equipment throughout the entire division will be up to date and modern, and we won't have to worry about it anymore. You'll be able to go to one screen and be able to set the temperature at every school throughout the division. We will have so much better control over our facilities and provide a better learning environment for our students, and it will free up needed additional money that's in our CIP now, over eight million dollars right now as we stand here today, and they haven't finished their study yet, will be redirected within our CIP to be able to do other things throughout the school division, such as flooring and such as, I don't know, many different things. We'll decide that during the CIP process when we go through with the School Board. So I'm very excited about this program, and I look forward to receiving your feedback from it once we get to that point. We also, under the objective three, want to talk about our school nutritional programs. We do want to provide high-quality tasty meals to our students. We want them to be satisfied with their meals that are being prepared for them. So we're going to start working through a nutrition task force with all of our schools to help get suggestions from them about what types of foods that they would like to have, and we will be comparing those choices with the national standards that we have to abide by. And as the safety and security of student transportation, one of my goals this year, our goals, I know this is a four-year plan, but we're going to be pushing hard to be able to look forward to having, whether we need to change our routing system on our buses, and we also want to look at implementing a GPS system within all of our buses. A GPS system will help us manage our system more effectively. We'll be able to have many more metrics about on-time, real, on-time, real-time type of metrics. I can tell you, we'll have an app for every parent who wants it, to know where their bus is at any given time for their child. What time is it going to arrive? Where is it right now, and when, and how many minutes before it gets to your home? We'll also be able to tell, you know, how many minutes the bus has been sitting still. If the bus, if we get a complaint that a bus is speeding, we'll know exactly at every minute of the day how fast that bus was going at that time. You know, if a parent complains that the bus was too early, too late, whatever, we'll know exactly where that bus is at all times. So these are, technology is great. We have a lot of wonderful tools that are out there that are available for us to be able to use, and we're going to explore those. So in the next, by between now and June 30th of next year, we're going to be exploring all of these ideas, and we're very excited about the progress and the way we're moving forward in Manassas City Public Schools. Are there any questions?
Do you have anything? Because he's about as excited as you are. I'm going to do closing comments.
Okay.
Well, that brings us to a close, our high overview of the four goals and the development process. And I want to thank the board for all the time that they put in over the summer and taking time to review and provide some really good input that made it some really great impactful changes. The next phase will be for public comment, and I invite the public to please comment on the strategic plan. You know, this process began with the public input, and it's appropriate that it ends with the public input. This will be posted on our website starting tomorrow morning. Ms. Rafford will have a Let's Talk topic posted along with a PDF copy of the proposed plan, and we'll run this until the end of September for public comment. Then we'll bring it back to the School Board in October to consider any input that we've received and hopefully take action on a final version.
Before I go to everybody else, you're right, the public and everybody's put in so much work, but so is our staff. And we know you've got lots to do, and this is just one more thing. I'm sure staff is looking forward to the end of September, to where they're done and they can put this away for a little while, and you can continue the rest of your jobs. they can put this away for a little while and you can continue the rest of your jobs. But we appreciate all of your efforts very much.
Thank you. It definitely will, once it's finalized, drive the rest of our mission in operations. It's exciting. You know, as Mr. Hawkins said, he's got a lot of exciting things we are looking forward to.
Mr. Robert?
A couple of things. Let's, I'm gonna start and go through some of the challenges and kind of sum some things up. Mr. Maria is right, we've been going about this now for a good six-plus months. And this is just not an artifact for the two people or 200 people or 1,000 you really think are watching. This is an artifact we're gonna put on the shelf and let gather dust. I forget, it was a recent state board meeting I was at, and I forget if it was Dr. Staples or Steve Costantino, but we were having a discussion. And the real key this, and a lot of my comments are gonna drive to this, is our past is not their future. What we learned, what we did in education, we all think we're experts because we all, many of you have PhDs, we've all been to high school, so we must all know what it is. But our past is not the future of our students and the jobs they're gonna do and how they learn and what they do. And that's why this plan is important and what we're doing. So the transparency we have engaging the community is something I hope this community's proud of and I hope people get engaged with it. When we talk about the challenges, number one challenge came out, recruit, train, retain high-quality staff. Ms. Wingfield gave us an article, oddly enough, or maybe by design, on exactly that about teacher turnover. Little rural Woodstock, Virginia has 15% teacher turnover. And they're not the highest in their region. And look at the competition they don't have compared to what we have. It's a very interesting dynamic in that market and something we clearly have to address with our workforce. What I thought was equally as interesting is what our students said were two of the top five challenges that nobody else said. Remember, our past is not their future. They said two of the most important things were preparing for college and, and I'm gonna say it's and, not an or, preparing to enter the job market. None of the grownups said that was important to them, but they did. They know what their future is. They know why we're doing this. That's something we've got to keep in mind as we go about everything. And then my final kind of editorial comment really gets into excellence and service and where we are, because it talks about 24 hours a day, actually, one of my next ones. There's been a lot in the last six or nine months in social media. And I am gonna push that we should hold people accountable for liability and litigious actions that are undocumented and unfair when they are published. And I believe we should start pursuing legal action. And I'm gonna stop it there, so I don't have any legal action. And then finally, Mr. Hawkins talked about finance. We're gonna do what's right. What he's really talking about is a modified kind of public-private partnership. It's an amortization where a vendor would come in, perform that modernization. It looks really good, it's a great sales document. A famous American said, trust would verify, the finance committee's gonna verify, to make sure we are getting what's right for the taxpayers of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wanna follow that?
Yeah, me neither. That's why I went first.
Oh, come on, there's gotta be something.
No. All right, this is our second strategic plan in five years?
Yes.
Yes. And we keep updating this because the world keeps updating. And we're, we're changing right along with it and keeping up to date. And I'm very proud of that, that we do this. And maybe we'll do it in another five years. We'll see. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To everybody. Annual update on student performance. How about Mr. Lyon? How about you?
I guess, yeah, why not? Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, members of the board, Dr. McGurk. This evening, I'm here to present my annual update of our SOL performance data. And I will dive right into it. I'll begin by looking at the division performance by subject area. There are five subjects on that slide, English reading, writing, history, math, and science. I'll be upfront, this was an off-year for us. In reading, we did decrease by a point. Writing, we did bump up by a point. And I want to point out that writing, that is an aggregate score of only two tests, grade eight writing and basically grade 11 writing. And the principals will be up here over the next few meetings presenting their school-level data. But I wanted to jump in a little bit ahead of the high school Mets here. Grade eight reading, uh, grade eight writing actually jumped by seven points at Mets and Dr., or Ms. Buckhite will be speaking to that as she presents. So we had a nice bump up in, in that area. The high school did decrease a little bit in that area, that's why we only had the one point there. But history, we did drop by three points. Math, we had a decrease there and the same in science. This data is being broken down by the teachers, the principals, all their school improvement processes that they're in the middle of. And they're finalizing their school improvement plans as we speak. So they're really drilling down to find the gaps that they need to address to improve this year's performance. Digging down into that data a little bit more by reporting groups, look by reading, you'll see similar trends. But there are four reporting groups I like to point out here that you'll see the gold circles around. The reason those gold circles are around, those pass rates, because our reporting groups outperformed or met the state pass rates. So looking at the reporting group for black students, our pass rate in reading for that reporting group was 68%, the state was 67. English learners, our pass rate in reading for that group was 65%, the state was 64. And students with disabilities, and none of these pass rates are at the level that we're comfortable with. Let me just put that out there, we still have work to do. But students with disabilities and the reading pass rate from division level is 47% and we, we match the state, the state's pass rate is 47% for that reporting group also. Then the reporting group for white students, we did exceed the state pass rate by one point there, 87%. Looking at the same reporting groups in regards to math, again, we have three of those reporting groups that outperformed the state or matched the state. And the reporting group for black students, our pass rate was 68%, the state was 66. For the reporting group of students economically disadvantaged, our pass rate was 68 and the state was 68. And the Hispanic reporting group was 71% and again, we match the state with a 71% pass rate for the state. But you'll see the same trends here as did in reading and as the overall pass rates on the first slide. We always want to keep context to our system to other systems. And so we took a look at other systems in state that have similar demographics and one high school. And comparing ourselves, the very, the column to the right, to Harrisonburg City, Manassas Park, and Alexandria City, the green boxes indicate where Manassas City Schools outperformed those other divisions. Last year, we did outperform Manassas Park, I think in several, if not all those areas. But our off-year, we're a few points below where they are now today. But I'm sure we're gonna bounce back after this year. Continuing that comparison, looking at Osborne High School compared to other high schools in Wabi area with similar demographics, you'll see the similar layout. Osborne is at the top, the green boxes indicate where Osborne outperformed those other similar schools across the five different subject areas. As you see, our Osborne High School is definitely competitive with most, almost all those schools with the exception to one in that comparison. Looking at cohort, here we take each graduating class and try to track how they, how they've been doing over the years. Looking at eighth-grade students, last year's eighth-grade students, last year they had a 63% pass rate. Previous to that, they had been making steady progress. Again, last year, this wasn't the best year and we are working to improve that. Grade seven had a slight improvement from 71 to 70, or 71 to 72% with that cohort. The next cohort, grade six cohort, you'll notice, again, they kind of stayed the same, 74 to 74. But one thing to note about the grade six cohort, or the grade six, though that cohort stayed 74 to 74, when we compare grade six this, last year to grade six to previously, our non-cohort comparison, that actually, that grade six score, 74% was actually three points better than the previous sixth grade. So though the cohort seemed static there, the grade six team actually improved the outcome for grade six longitudinally. Grade five cohort, looking at that, they stayed the same in reading, 72 to 72. Grade four did bump up two points. And looking, if we were going to compare last year's grade four to the previous grade four, they also increased three points from the previous fourth grade. All right. And then grade three sets the baseline for next year. Now going, moving into math, starting with the eighth grade again, it gets tricky because at, at the middle school level, eighth grade splits out. It's no longer a cohort to report because some students will go to algebra, some will stay in the grade-level math. So what we did here is we split it out up until sixth grade and then we split out what it looks like at the middle school level. So when this, when this class of 2021 left Mayfield, 84% of them passed that grade-level math test. At the middle school in 15, 16, this cohort had a 65 to 97% pass rate. And when you average those out, it's about 80%, which is commensurate, close to 84 when they came out of Mayfield. Then in 16, 17, last year, again, algebra one, 85%, geometry and 97%. And the grade eight math was at 16. Again, if you average those three out, get around about the 80% overall. Excuse me. Looking at seventh grade cohort, class of 2022, they came out of Mayfield with 81% pass rate. And as I get into middle schools, I explained, they, they start to split the pathways, 100% pass in algebra for that cohort and 60 at the grade level. Of course, when you average that out, it's 80%. So it's very commensurate with what they were when they came out of Mayfield. Looking at last year's sixth grade, that cohort did improve by four points from the previous year's fifth graders. That's definitely a nice bump. And then comparing, looking at it longitudinally, just to let you know, if we were compared last year's sixth, grade six to the previous year's grade six, it would have been a five-point jump, longitudinally speaking. The grade five cohort did drop, did drop there, 82 to 77. Again, Ms. Mills and her team are breaking that down and identifying what they need to improve this year. Grade four did have a nice three-point improvement and grade three established their baseline. And that concludes my overall. Once again, the principals will be coming up and drilling down into the test-level data for each of their schools, which is the underlying data of these higher level reports.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Just with edification, when we say cohort, we're in a transient population, so obviously students who leave aren't included in that cohort. If a new student enters the system, are you using his SOL from a previous school, do you exclude him as well or her?
I did not exclude students. I didn't start with the purest cohort from kindergarten.
So you didn't go by student ID, for instance, only go those who took by exam and go like to like? It's really just the class compared to the class?
Yes, class compared to class.
Okay.
It did exclude any transfers in during the school year last year. That failed.
And, and just a question, it's more inappropriate, middle school question, but when I look at, and 100% pass for algebra on Slide 9 is great, but it makes me wonder, are we challenging enough students?
I can't hear you.
Are we challenging enough students? If we have 100% pass rate, maybe there's some more students we could actually up-level to challenge more to take algebra early.
I wish I had the number off the top of my head, how many we had in that cohort. I don't know, I can get that for you. But 100% pass rate, that tells me we've identified the correct students for that test. And when you're at that level and you're doing algebra one at seventh grade, if you don't have 100% pass rate, you really need to take a look at how you're identifying the students, in my opinion.
That's fair. It's, it's, I'm giving you the Jay Matthews challenge index, right? I mean, it's, which is more important, how many people take the test or how many people pass the test?
Right. But I think that's a fair question. I think that's something we can look at and make sure if, if there's more capacity, we certainly would want to increase it and challenge the students. But I do know that Ms. Graham works with the math coaches and to identify all the students who are ready for that and do the prep work in the other lower grade levels to try to produce as many students that can go into that pathway and they're ready.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is that you?
No.
You were worried about that, weren't you, buddy?
No.
I like the music. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lyon, I think you're done.
Thank you.
Yeah. 1718, staffing update. Ms. Wingfield, last room?
Tonight I'll be sharing with you our current instructional staff openings and the status of the PCG instructors. Across America, there is a national teacher shortage. Reason for the teacher shortage includes salary, teacher retention, and low enrollment in teacher preparatory programs. The teacher shortage has created severe demands in bilingual and ESL, foreign language, special education, math, science, and in urban and rural school teachers. For the most part, these shortages parallel our current openings. At the present time, we have three elementary instructional openings and two non-instructional openings, which are math coaches at Weems and Dean Elementary School. At the present time, we have seven instructional openings in our secondary schools. Our schools are actively interviewing for these openings. We have potential candidates in the, in the pipeline for hire, either utilizing them as a long-term sub, employing instructional assistants, which can be or may be hired in the near future, and retirees. Our two objectives from the human resources goal and the strategic plan that we discussed earlier will assist us in addressing the ongoing teacher shortage and the retention of employees. We'll be working to strengthen an open collaborative working environment throughout the division and incorporate a benefits and teacher salary committee this year to work on improving our benefits for all division employees and salaries for teachers. We will also be attending the governor's summit on the teacher shortage in Charlottesville at the University of Virginia at the Curry School of Education on October the 24th. PCG met with our principals in April. The principals were asked to identify the qualities that they were looking for in instructors. PCG then took this information back, began advertising positions, conducted interviews, checked references, and performed background checks on applicants. The applicants then reported to the schools based on the qualities that our principals asked for at their particular school. After the interviews were conducted, if the principal recommended the candidate for an opening at his or her school, the PCG applicant was forwarded to the human resources for a background check. Upon return of the background check, a start date was and is established. This concludes my instructional staffing update. Do you have any questions?
I'm gonna have one on the interventionists. What do we do about the open spaces? Are we just, they are?
We're currently using substitutes.
Okay.
Those are our division substitutes.
They continually looking for other candidates?
That is true. We have seven in the pipeline and we have conducted training with the PCG because they are doing, our substitutes, we're doing assessments with students, we're providing training on technology and other things that are particular to Manassas City Public Schools.
Anyone else? Mr. Hamlin?
You may not, you may not have updated your total, you have more than 20.
Okay.
Should be 23. Right for grandpa.
But still, we're short by a third.
Yes.
I mean, not to be a cynic.
But we, so we have 23 there and there's seven in the pipeline?
Right.
So we're only three short, hopefully, if the seven all come through. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
So you guys hung around, Jimmy? All right, we'll go on to action agenda. The proposed naming of the high school, the Osborne High School gymnasium floor.
Over the last several months, this school board has been discussing and receiving public comment on two issues. A proposed name change to Tudor Lane is the road between Baldwin Elementary Intermediate School and Osborne High School and the proposed naming School and Osborne High School, and the proposed naming of the Osborne High School gym floor. The school board received approximately two hundred suggestions from the community regarding the Tudor Lane name change, and a suggestion from the athletic boosters to name the gym floor after beloved teacher and coach, Mr. Barry Suddeth. During the school board meetings and based on this community input that we received, some school board members suggested that Tudor Lane be changed to Eagle Way with the street address of nineteen seventy-seven to commemorate the establishment of Osborne High School as a city of Manassas School and the gym floor after Mr. Suddeth. Since the school board's last meeting, the Suddeth family has shared with Mrs. Radford their desire to have the gym floor named after Barry. They feel it's more appropriate as he spent the majority of his career as a teacher and as a coach at Osborne. As a result, you know, staff is recommending to the school board that the Tudor Lane be changed to Eagle Way and the Osborne High School gym floor be named after Mr. Barry Suddeth.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go out of my normal way of doing things, and I am going to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the naming of the Osborne High School Gymnasium floor in honor of Mr. Barry Suddeth and the placement of a plaque on the wall of the gymnasium commemorating Mr. Suddeth's dedication to Osborne High School.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by Mrs. Kiefer. Any discussion? Okay, I'm going to discuss. Mr. Hawkins brought up the letter that I got from Ms. Radford. She had spoken to Francine, and he touched on this, but she quoted in this letter Francine Suddeth, Mr. Suddeth's wife. Barry gave his life literally for that school. Having his name in the gym would be the most fitting, unquote. Without a doubt, something needs to be done for Mr. Suddeth. I've had some people come to me and wonder why it took two years to do this. Something like this, which I consider quite serious, naming something in our school system after someone, you don't want to do it knee-jerk. And we have taken our time. This opportunity came up. Jimmy and the boosters came to me six months ago, eight months ago, and started the process. It got fumbled, and they brought it back to us. And I believe this is the right thing to do for Coach Suddeth. He literally started with us. Jimmy's senior year was our first year, and he was Jimmy's teacher then, and he passed the night before convocation two years ago. He was with us for his entire life till the very end. This is a guy that without a doubt needs something done for him. Coach Suddeth, I didn't have coach. And he had an influence on me without being my teacher for my whole life, and without being my coach, because he was a basketball coach when we were there, and heaven knows I wasn't going to be on the basketball team. Sanford seen me play. It's just not going to happen. But this is very fitting, and it's for a man that did. He gave his life to this school system, and I'm very proud that I was able to make this motion. Anyone else? Anything else, Jimmy? I can go out of line.
Sir, I agree with every word you just said.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by Mrs. Kiefer. I guess I have to read this thing again, because that's what we do. That the school board of the city of Manassas approve the naming of Osborne High School Gymnasium floor in honor of Mr. Barry Suddeth and the placement of a plaque on the wall of the gymnasium commemorating Mr. Suddeth's dedication to Osborne High School. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven, zero. We will make it very public when that dedication will happen, and make sure everybody knows the gym should be full that night for that event. Okay. Proposed name change to Tudor Lane. Mr. Hawkins has already given us the update on that. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the name change of Tudor Lane to Eagle Way and the street address for Osborne High School to nineteen seventy-seven.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer. Discussion? Okay, I've got a little bit. Approved, I think we should put the recommendation of the name, because we are not the authority to change the name.
That's, we could, that's a fair point. We could maybe say request the, the name change.
Right. The council, and I think actually the post office, where the street number actually plays in.
Right. And that, and the street address of Osborne to nineteen seventy-seven and of Baldwin nineteen seventy-eight. Does that work? You two okay with that, with the maker and the second?
We are fine with that.
Okay. Any other discussion? So the motion that the school board of the city of Manassas recommend the name change of Tudor Lane to Eagle Way and the street address of Osborne High School to nineteen seventy-seven and of Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate School of nineteen seventy-eight. Did you get that, Alba? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven, nothing. Okay, we're going to go on to superintendent's evaluation goals for 2017 and 2018. Now, Jimmy, would be the time to sneak out if you wanted to.
No.
We are in for the long haul now, right?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board. We began working on the, on the board's goals for the superintendent probably back in June, because once we receive the unofficial results of our student performance, we had also conducted surveys, we had an idea of the directions that we needed to go. So staff began working, and those goals were presented to you at the retreat for which you made some suggestions. And we had some long conversations about, as Mr. Lyon mentioned, that some of our academic progress actually went down by one or two points, and what we want to do is keep our momentum going forward. You also talked about all of our students, and while the federal government and the state gets into reporting groups, you feel like all reporting groups are important, no matter what their scores are, and you also want to see that students are progressing individually. And we did a lot of work with our principals as well, and as I go through these goals, I'll kind of explain how we're going to approach the board's goals and ask that you provide more comment or your approval tonight. So our 2018 goals is that all students will be provided learning opportunities to increase their academic achievement. Under student services, that we establish a culture of safety, respect, and responsibility in all schools to support the learning environment. In communication, to improve school-based communication with students, teachers, parents, and community to increase support, engagement, and achievement. And then in human resources, to improve employee recruitment, retention, performance, personal growth, and to support student achievement. And I did also need to mention that these goals are also coming out of the superintendent's annual evaluation as well. So under student achievement, one of the things that we have done is that we've met with principals, and even during the superintendent's leadership retreat, they met with their leadership teams and talked about what is our vision? What is a vision for Manassas City Public Schools? But what's it in the schools? Because every single school is different. And so we have really moved to a level now where the schools have got, need to look at their staffs, and then their students, and their climate, and what's, you know, their focuses within their schools, and design their vision. So when we looked at our goals, we wanted to give that kind of room to our schools and to our teachers. So the schools will identify specific student achievement gaps and address with school-based strategies. And when I say schools, it's really the teachers. And I've even followed up with emails to the principals, reminding them that we want the teachers digging into the data, and we want to hear what they're saying, what our next steps are. The schools will identify specific activities to support the on-time graduation, beginning in kindergarten. You know, the governor, and we've got the regional workforce development, we've got companies all across the state saying that our graduation starts in pre-K and kindergarten. And we start now talking to kids about why they're learning what they're learning and giving them an opening into what the world of work looks like and how they talk and share their ideas. So this starts in kindergarten. Osborne High School will plan to work with students who become, could become potential dropouts. Again, I want to say, though, that Osborne gets our children in ninth grade. If we don't work with them prior to ninth grade, magically at ninth grade, they can't reach these kids and say, you are all going to graduate. They have to come with some kind of vision for themselves, which is why it's so important that we get the vision of our teachers. Reduce the number of students with five or more unexcused tardies by ten percent. And again, when we say the number of students, we're going to be looking at individual students. Reduce the number of students with more than fifteen days of absences. Now, this will be new in the way we're approaching attendance, because the state is changing. And it won't be this year. We're getting ready for the following year, when the state says that we cannot have, that we can't have students with eighteen or more excused or unexcused absences. So we've bumped it down to fifteen, because you don't live on the edge, and we're looking at fifteen days of absences, whether they're excused or unexcused. We need to develop partnerships with community agencies and other groups to provide support for families and students identified as a risk for chronic absenteeism. This is a state requirement, but we don't need the state to tell us that we can't, we can't get kids, we have no control over parents bringing their children or guardians bringing their children to school. This has to be a joint effort. Under student services, we need to, we need to continue working on our culture of safety, respect, and responsibility in all of our schools, because without that, you can't grow a learning environment. We will continue to support PBIS to ensure fidelity with school-wide implementation, and we want to reduce the number of interruptions of student learning due to behavior. We have improved that dramatically over the past year, but we're not where we want to be. Really, our goal would be that there would be, and that's kind of a utopia, because even in our adult lives, you have adults that interrupt a meeting or something with talking, and our goal, though, is zero interruptions, that everybody is producing and productive and able to express their thoughts. Under communication, for the last five years, we've been working on district communication, and we've enhanced it tremendously, even to the point that now we have the Parent Community Leadership Academy, where we get the community engaged in what we're about, what the city's about. We are about to also have Why Manassas? It will be an independent website from the city. When we say Why Manassas, it's why should parents pick Manassas to bring their kids to Manassas City Public Schools? And we're very excited about that. But we can only do so much from the division level, and what we need to do now is focus on our school level. It's important what our kids go home and say to their parents. It's also important how our teachers talk with our parents. It's important the communication that goes on from our principals. So we're pulling all of that together, and our schools are developing their own communication plans that will be shared with staff. There will be buy-in with staff, because staff will be a part of that. And then from the division level, there will be professional development for communication and protocols, because we do all need to have a common understanding of what our protocols are. In human resources, this is, this is probably, you know, one of the most important areas that we have, because the reason we have student achievement is because of our students and teachers. That's where, that's where our grassroots are. That's where everything starts and ends. Actually, it starts with our bus drivers, and I consider them our teachers. We have other people along the way, along the school day, those that provide meals, those that keep our buildings clean, and those that take our children back home in the evenings. They're important, and they can mess a day up if they are not supportive of our children. But then you have these other people that spend a great amount of time every single day working with our students, getting to know them, getting to understand where their challenges are and where their strengths are. Well, in order to find these people, we have to have a good recruitment, retention, performance, personal growth, and all of that came to us this year in our surveys. We want our schools, the division can work with our teachers, but our schools is where they live. Our schools is where our teachers work and live and find times to play and do all of these other things. So our schools have got to help as the division in identifying strategies that are important to their staff. The staff at an elementary school is going to look a lot different than the staff at Osborne High School. They've got different kids, and they're teaching different things, and they've got a focus that four years from now, we've got to get the kids out the building door. We need to hire the best and brightest, and we have to support our teachers in their first three years. We want to support all, again, though, just like all students are important, so are all of our teachers. You can't just focus on the first three years. You have to focus on that first three, the first ten, the next ten, the next ten. Every teacher is important. We're identifying, we want to identify opportunities to support our teachers in reaching their full potential. They've asked for relevant, targeted, and leveled professional development, and we are focused to get that this year. And we want to provide opportunities for our teachers to lead and collaborate. I've been really excited about some of the work that's happening right now in the elementary schools. They're digging into the data. There are things, there are common practices we do across the division, but I've actually got grade-level teams at the elementary school that have already started submitting plans to me, saying, can we move away from this expectation and do this as we work with our students? And then all the team signs off on it, and they're being approved. Those are options that the teachers have, because they are the ones that are going to, they own their data. So I've kind of talked about our next steps as I went through this. Principals are working with their teachers to evaluate the data. The teachers are working together to provide input in the improvement process. There has to be a vision. The vision has to be through the principal, but the vision has to be through the teacher's eyes, because they're the ones leading our students. The principal will present the, their board presentations to the staff before they come to you. It's respectful, and it's, they also need to, you know, they, the principals are accountable to their staff, and then they will come to you, and when they present their plan, it will be the voice of their staff. And they will, and that's, also at that time, they'll talk about the work that they're doing with our, how they've changed and modified their intervention plans to meet the needs of their students. We are moving forward with our professional learning committees that are in each school, and then a division-wide professional learning committee that each member of, from each school is a member of, so that we can hear the voices of the schools and have a means to make sure that we're meeting everybody's needs. There will be, there is a salary and benefits committee that Ms. Wingfield and Mr. Hawkins will be leading, so that we can look at how we attack our salary and benefits. You know, our benefits are growing, and we're working through that, but salary is a challenge, and we want to hear what our teachers are wanting in regards to salary and what our other staff members are. And then there will be a culture and climate committee, and that will, that representative from each school, there will be one in each school, and then a representative that's from each school, there will be one in each school, and then a representative that sits on my superintendent's advisory. Also, a part of this next step is a date for the mid-year evaluation date. It doesn't have to be decided tonight, but that would be, that will be a date that we need to come up with. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question. The people that are part of the committees, were they volunteering, excited to be a part of these committees?
Yes. They, I've asked the principals to talk with their staff, and if, we do need people that need, that know how to use their voice. These committees are very important, and sometimes you can get somebody that's pretty shy.
I understand.
So, and they have to be somewhat, they have to be someone on their staffs that also know how to listen and give people's opinions, even though it's not their opinion, but it's the opinion of everyone. So we've kind of defined the person that we want. Hopefully, the staff can work with the principal and make that decision.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome Mr. Wolf, our, the city councilman, who is the liaison to the school board, and gets to come watch us do our thing, and then report back to council, I guess. Thank you very much, sir. Budget development calendar for 2019.
Motion on the previous action.
Oh, we are under action here. See, that's why I got him sitting here for it. Sir?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the superintendent's 2017, 2018 evaluation goals as presented.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the superintendent's 2017, 2018 evaluation goals as presented. Any discussion? Just, sir?
For the benefit of the thousand people who are watching.
Thousands.
Thousands, okay. I've lost track of Nielsen. There's a second attachment to board docs, and it provides the exact specificity to the PowerPoint Dr. McGore was presenting. So when she talks about a reduction of X percent, it specifically says, "Here is the number we have." So, you know, we, again, we're being fully transparent. The superintendent's goals are out there for the community to see, and it's our expectations of what our school system will deliver.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven-zero. Didn't mean to skip over here. Action there. Mr. Hawkins, budget development calendar, draft 2018?
So, yeah, we're, we're going into the FY19 budget.
Oh, the 2018, okay, okay, right.
So we're here, in front of you tonight is the, is the budget, is the proposed school board budget calendar. It's very similar to what we've had in prior years. We will begin, hopefully, on October the 12th, to discuss the capital improvement plan, culminate in December with the approval of the CIP, and then we'll begin working with, you know, revenue estimates, our state numbers, and whatever the governor's budget turns out to be, or the operating fund, and a big, big part of the budget process. But we hope to be finished by the last board meeting in March, and then we'll present our budget as required by state law to city council. Generally speaking, it has been the last couple of years, the first week in April. I'm not sure of the exact date at this time.
Thank you, sir. Come on, a motion of the...
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the draft 2019 budget development calendar as presented.
Yes, sir. I just want to, you know, point out, Ms. Hawkins and I talked, this did not come through the finance committee. We're waiving second reading, because the first date out there is literally a month away. I wanted the board, the community, to see what the dates are. The reality of it is, as Mr. Hawkins said, we're paralleling what we've done in the past, and come some date in the future, we will have some conflict. We don't know. We have an unknown unknown. We'll have a snow day, something will happen out there. So we needed to get this out. I felt we needed to get this out there for the community.
I think it's very prudent. Anyone else? Okay. Motion that the school board, or motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the city of Manassas...
Williamson.
Williamson? Okay, you guys test.
You're on your toes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the draft 2019 budget development calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven-zero. Can I get a motion to enter closed session?
You may, sir. Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemption from open meetings as allowed by Section 2.2, 3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose. Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, P E R S 1718-0147.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711. Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose, Discussion of Personnel, P E R S 1718-0147. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carry seven-zero. Thanks for being here for the duration, Jimmy. We appreciate it, brother.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.